I am adjourning our executive session and we are now in our study session. And we will be getting, we will be having a presentation this evening. It looks like Dr. Gilbert will start the presentation. And we are going to review our current safety mitigation plan. Dr. Gilbert?
Madam President, members of the board, can you hear me?
Yes.
Madam President, members of the board. Thank you for this opportunity so that we can share our current COSD COVID mitigation plan for today in this presentation. Ms. Lindsay Hartley, who is our Director of Health Services, will share our information in regards to our COSD dashboard. I will give some background of our mitigation plan and share where we are at this time. Mr. Rother, who is our Senior Director of Education Service, will cover the current mitigation strategies that we have with some minor updates. And Mr. Leo Schluer, who is our Director of Elementary Education, will give us some information on what will occur when COVID cases increase as established in our district thresholds. With that, I'd like to bring up Ms. Lindsay Hartley. I'd like to also give her some credit for the hard work that her and her team is doing every day as they're working through the mitigations that we have within the district and working quite hard, so I really appreciate it. So with that, I'll bring up Lindsay Hartley.
The first four seats in the front row are reserved.
Madam President, members of the board, can you hear me okay? Okay. So tonight, I'm just going to go over real quick, kind of going back to basics a little bit, so we can go over how we look at active cases, resolved cases, and you know, how cases get on the dashboard, how we contact trace, et cetera. There we go. So here, I just added what an active case is. An active case is any student or staff member participating in on-campus activities. So that's in-person learning, sports, anything that is on our campus. Who has tested positive for an active COVID-19 infection. Individuals who test positive are excluded from participation, from any in-person, on-campus activities until the nurse is able to verify that the individual meets the return criteria that is set by the state and county health departments. A resolved case is once the individual has been cleared to return and they have their return date and they're feeling well and have met that criteria, they're no longer considered active and move into the resolved column on the dashboard. So the dashboard numbers that are up today, we have the total for staff and students, which is 49,008. And we had a total of 211 active cases on the dashboard today with a .4% positivity. Secondary staff and students is at 26,313 with total active cases of 139, which is .5% positivity. And the elementary staff and students is 21,916, which total active cases for them was 72 or .3% positivity. And I will mention that the dashboard will be updated daily from here on out. So the next thing I will cover is contact tracing, just kind of the steps that we go through when we're notified of a case, either by the parent or by Maricopa County. The nurse verifies the case as laboratory confirmed positive and they file the case with the county if it was the parent that reported it. The COVID-19 positive individuals interviewed by the team of health office staff, so that is our health assistants and our nurses that cover the sites. The case information is then sent to myself and I verify the information is correct and we get it put on the dashboard. So when the dashboard's updated the next day, it will show as an active case. Close contacts are then identified in the school setting and we do that with class schedules, seating charts, and as part of the interview process, when we talk to the positive individuals' parents or the staff member. And then the close contacts are then contacted by designated staff in the schools. Outbreaks, I just wanted to go over the definition of an outbreak because when you hear the word, you automatically think that it's a lot of cases. But the definition of an outbreak, according to Maricopa County, is having two or more PCR-positive cases of COVID-19 among students or staff with illnesses onset within a 14-day period. And these cases have to be epilinked, which means we have to have reason to believe that the only place that they come in contact is at school. That is, that is hard to do with, you know, everything open in the community. One thing we don't know is where they're at when they're not at school. I did want to bring up testing. Testing is still widely available across the valley and in many cases, it's free due to the Family First Coronavirus Response Act. And I have added the information that we give to families when they, you know, would like to have information about getting tested. All the health offices have this information available for families.
Thank you, Ms. Hartley, for sharing that information. So I pulled up our district website where our plan can be found. And we look at the purpose of our mitigation plan. It was to outline the COSD mitigation strategies that were in effect for this year and how we were going to manage when different situations arise. The plan was developed and communicated out to our families prior to the end of last year. We made that as a focus, one, as we were listening to parents and wanting to know what was it going to look like this year, as well as making sure before school was out, we had a plan in place that could be communicated out to our families. Decisions would be made utilizing county and local data, which was encouraged by the county, to not only look at what was going on on the county dashboard, but looking at what was happening within the community. That's why it's so important to look at not just COSD as a whole, but also in the areas of our schools. And also, it was important to get out before the school year ended to allow families time to make some decisions as to how they were going to manage the beginning of the next school year. With that being said, we received a lot of feedback throughout last year from parents, whether it be emails, phone calls, meetings, got information from administrators within the district at different sites. During April, we met with our COVID Task Force Committee on April 27th of last year and got feedback from that committee as well. We presented that information to this governing board on May 20, I'm sorry, on May 12th of 2021 to share this plan. After that, the plan was placed on the district website and was communicated out to the families. I think it's real important to understand that our goal was to put a plan in place that there might be some changes, but it would be very minor, understanding that last year was a roller coaster of a lot of things changing, whether it was district making changes or the state making changes or the county making changes, and trying to get some consistency for our families as we're trying to address the situation that we are currently in. So with that being said, you will see that we have face masks on here as well as increase in COVID cases. As it relates to face masks in the, our plan, in our initial plan last year that was presented to the board, we were starting school with face masks being optional unless mandated by the Maricopa County or an executive order. And at this time, the recommendation from the county has only been a recommendation and nothing as it relates to requiring. Legislation was passed by Arizona legislators and signed by the governor prohibiting mask requirements. That took place on June 30th. As you know, it was included in the budget bill at that particular time. We know that there is litigation that is occurring right now and there's difference of opinion on whether that is law or not. I think it's important to note that there are differing opinions, but that will be decided at some point here in the near future. Regardless, in alignment with CDC and Maricopa County Department of Health, COSD strongly recommends that students and staff wear masks while on school campuses. And that was updated on our site and again, strongly recommending. When we look at increased COVID cases, I think it's important as we look at the thresholds and how do we get to our thresholds when we're addressing increasing COVID cases, which means we're adding mitigation strategies. And they're being added at a location, not as a district as a whole, because we're looking at each school based on those thresholds. So in order to move to the third column that you'll see as we, sorry, as I kind of scroll, you'll see in this third column, in order to move to the third column, which is the increased COVID cases, a couple of things need to occur. The first is, in COSD, both county benchmarks are in red, which means highly community spread, which is the percent positivity as well as the cases per 100,000. Currently, those are red. That's the first piece. Then there's an and. After that, then you look at what are the thresholds based on a specific site. These thresholds haven't changed since last year when we had presented it early on. So if for an elementary school, if they have a 2% positive active cases, they would meet that threshold and it would be for that school that met the threshold or that percent at that time. For junior highs, it would be 1.5% positive active cases. And for high schools, it'd be 1% positive active cases, which I know, you know, recent, that was Hamilton that hit 1% and we moved into the increased COVID cases and we sent that information to the staff as well as to the families in that area. So with that, important to understand how we got to this plan. This plan has been out since May. It was communicated on our website, was communicated out to the families and presented to the board. Now I'll have Mr. Rother come up and he's going to share with you where we currently are in our school mitigation plan.
Madam President, members of the governing board. So as Dr. Gilbert mentioned, this plan was presented last May, was designed to indicate the areas of mitigation that our schools would enter into as we started the school year. But it was also designed to be somewhat dynamic and flexible as we went through the year to be able to make adjustments and clarifications as we, as we went. Obviously, in May, we were all hoping that, you know, things can get back to normal and we could enter schools in a normal fashion. And then as we got into the school year, we took a look at our plan and made some modifications and clarifications where needed. So what I want to present to you is not the entire plan, but to highlight some areas that we made, some of those modifications too. And also to highlight that the, this middle column here of our plan is universal for every school in COSD regardless of where they are in terms of their, the number of cases that they have. These are the mitigation strategies that every school will follow in COSD as ways to reduce the spread of COVID in our schools. So the first one on here is social distancing protocols. We will observe three feet social distancing where feasible and maintain student directional flow and staff in common areas are at normal capacity. What was updated and you'll see here in the red and for the community, they'll be able to also see in the red when and what was updated on our plan. These directional flows at schools must be denoted by signage or directional arrows on the floors. Now, what we noticed as we visited schools those first two weeks were that there were directional flows in place, but they weren't always noted with signage. And so we wanted to make that very clear to staff and students, how they should move around campus to avoid being in close contact. Next was instructional grouping. Now, this one did not change at all, but I wanted to highlight it as we know that we, grouping in classes are important in a strong instructional strategy, but we wanted to only do that where it was instructionally appropriate. So conversations were had at school buildings where, where possible, we want to make sure that students are spaced out within three feet and only when necessary did we group students for instructional purposes. Large group gatherings was another area that was updated. And what we really wanted to do here is clarify, I think prior to this, we had a to-be-determined regarding large group gatherings. And I think as we entered into the summer months, we were hopeful that we would be able to continue those, but we wanted to put some more guidance around those as we started the school year. So they're scheduled outdoors and feasible. And for large indoor gatherings, we have clarified that for schools, that they are only allowable when three feet of social distancing can be maintained. Dances, assemblies, pep rallies, guest speakers, performances, et cetera. So when there are those large indoor gatherings, we wanted to maintain that three feet of social distancing. As mentioned before by Ms. Hartley, we are going to update the COVID dashboard on a daily basis. Athletic events for spectators, we are currently still reviewing this. We took a look at, we wanted to just specify that we are taking a look at what that capacity will be at our sporting events. I can tell you that we just had an AD meeting here where we had athletic directors from across the East Valley that were here today to talk about the upcoming sports season and mitigation strategies. And the takeaway from that was that we have not heard that other districts are limiting capacity for indoor or outdoor events, but that is something that we are currently in discussions about if and when we need to do that. Contact tracing and quarantining. This was last updated on the ninth and I'm going to let Mr. Schluter talk a little bit more about what that looks like in our, in our third column. But again, this is for our contact tracing and quarantining. Any student within three feet for more than 15 minutes in a 24-hour period will be notified and have the option to quarantine for up to 10 days. Any student exhibiting COVID symptoms will be excluded per our exclusion guidelines. So if students are symptomatic, they are excluded. And under that kind of universal second column, they'll be notified and have the option to quarantine. Field trips was another area that was recently modified as well. Those are still in the universal category. Those are still to be site-approved, but we are requiring mitigation strategies for all field trips. So regardless of if they're overnight or if they're just local field trips, a mitigation plan has to accompany that field trip and has to be signed off of by the site administrator. We also clarified volunteers. As we were going to limit volunteers, we hadn't really defined where we were going to limit when we initially brought this plan to you in May, but we felt that it was most prudent to limit those to non-student spaces only. So we are allowing volunteers still in our schools, but we are going to keep them in our non-student spaces if they'd like to come in and help with copying or doing other things that many of our parents do and we're grateful for that, but they'll just have to be in non-student spaces. The exclusion guidelines, although those haven't changed, I wanted to reference that again, that we do have that in place. So students are required to be excluded for COVID-like symptoms per our exclusion guidelines. And so that did not change and that is something that we're enforcing universally. And then finally, our quarantine students connection to the classroom. This one did not change as well, but I wanted to reiterate that students who will be allowed access for missed assignments via Google Classroom and student access to instruction may require site distribution of devices. So if there is a family or student that quarantines kind of universally in one of our schools, they will have access to their assignments on Google Classroom and access to a device. So again, those are our universal mitigation procedures at all of our sites regardless of where they're at in terms of their, their cases on their campus. And I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Schluter, who's going to talk to you about that third column when a school experiences an increase in COVID cases.
Mr. Rother, before you leave, could you let the public know where on the website they can find this information?
Yeah, absolutely. It's on the, let me see if I can go back to it here. Okay, on the scrolling, it's one of the first headlines. So if you hit on that headline that has the scrolling, it actually brings you to our opening and you'll see our exclusion guidelines here, the COVID-19 dashboard for COSD, and then our school year opening plan. And that brings you right to the plan.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Mr. Rother. Can you hear me? Madam President, members of the board, thanks for our opportunity to review this plan. Again, based on the thresholds that Dr. Gilbert referred to earlier for our individual sites, that's the one, the one and a half and the 2% thresholds that you see right there. I'm going to talk a little bit about this third column that you see as an increase in COVID cases. And it's important to note that these additional mitigation strategies will be put in place at distinct sites that meet one of these thresholds, assuming both of these, you know, both the MCDPH COVID-19 indicators are in red and the threshold is met. So I'm going to talk a little bit and just briefly discuss some of the highlights here. So as a site may hit that, one of those thresholds, you're going to see that social distancing of three feet is going to be enforced during all campus activities, including the instructional groupings. You will find that the district, of course, we continue to say that the district dashboard is going to be, continue to be updated daily. We're going to limit the sharing of classroom supply materials and textbooks. You'll see that currently, we're allowing the sharing of materials as long as hand hygiene mitigations are in place. We will further restrict and limit the sharing for those sites that get into that, that threshold. Large group gatherings will be held outdoors, okay, as opposed to right now where you have the opportunity to hold it indoors if you meet, if you can meet that three-foot social distancing. I'm going to come down to the, I talked about the COVID. I'm going to come down to the contact tracing and the quarantining. At this stage, when they meet the threshold, any student who's been exposed to an individual with COVID-19 within three feet for more than 15 minutes in a 24-hour period will be quarantined. The option is no longer there, it will be quarantined. It is important to note that a voluntary proof of full vaccination may shorten that Field trips are going to receive further restriction, okay, requiring a district approval to do that, which is where we were at last year as well, district approval to determine where they're going and what mitigation plans are in place. We're asking, we will continue to ask for staff to increase the frequency of disinfecting those high-touch point services. We've already got it in here during the day to do it two to three times per day. We'll ask for further increases in that. And then of course, you're going to find further restrictions on both our volunteer and our parent visits, okay? We will further restrict what parent visits look like, whether they can access the campus and our volunteers as well. In closing, it's going to be important to note that schools that have met this threshold will be removed from this phase of increased mitigation upon two weeks of being below the threshold. So we will, we will provide a two-week window to monitor that. And as long as you've met, as long as you've fallen below that threshold, that one, one and a half or 2% threshold, for a two-week window following the date at which you've met that threshold, then we, then we will go back to this middle column. That covers our mitigation plan review.
And then finally, I'd like to have Mrs. Hartley come back up and share a little bit as it relates to the dashboard. I know she gave you some information initially, but I wanted to also just touch base with the dashboard for you.
Okay, so I just want to, we're just going to go back and show you what the dashboard looks like so everybody in the community and everyone can find that. And then I'll just go through what's on it. So it's listed under the COSD COVID dashboards and we also have a link to the county so you can always see what cases are there as well. So here is the dashboard that we update daily. Again, I already went over what the confirmed active cases are and what the resolved cases are. Here, you will find that this number changes because it's fluid. It's fluid with enrollments and staff changes. So that will be a current number every day along with the cases that are either active and then once they're resolved, they move to this next column. And one thing I will say about the confirmed cases, I know that sometimes I get questions from parents about, you know, well, I know there's a case on my campus. It does take some time to make sure we've confirmed the case and that we have all, all of the information we need to get it put on the dashboard. So, you know, while it's not a long delay, there may be a delay, you know, of a day or so if you know about a case sometimes before we do. Down here towards the bottom, we also post non-campus COVID-19 cases. Now, these are cases that come in where maybe a student was already at home because their family was, was sick or, you know, had tested positive. That's where you will find these cases who were not on campus during their infectious period, which is 48 hours before they either test positive or their symptoms show up. And again, here you will always see it last update, when it was last updated. Thank you.
Thank you, Lindsay. The last thing I'd like to say about the dashboard, and it's very important as she shared, this information comes from all of the contact tracing and following up with parents and the investigation that they have to do when they have a positive case. And it needs to be a positive confirmed case for it to go on the dashboard. I think it's real important because normally when you're doing contact tracing, it's working with the county and the county staff to do the contact tracing, to do the, find the information and then to actually respond and send information out to the parents. But that hasn't been the case since we have started, I'm guessing because they don't have the manpower. So we've had to make sure that we've had the manpower to work with Ms. Hartley and the schools in order to get this information to put it on the dashboard. So it, when it goes on the dashboard, it's because of all the work that has gone behind everything in order to get that information so that it can go, come up and be on the dashboard. So with that, I'd like to turn it back over to President Mosden.
Thank you, Dr. Gilbert. I assume that we do have a couple of board members that have some questions. Should we start with Mrs. Brunner?
I wanted to thank you for putting all this together and making it clear for, for us and for the community what exactly that dashboard is. I did, was curious if we've had any feedback from staff who spend their days in classrooms, how this mitigation plan is working out, like where are we getting feedback from?
I can start. I think from, from all of our staff, it's tough. And I think the first reason it's tough is because you have some staff and just as you have people on both sides has, having to do with wearing masks or not wearing masks. You have some kids are wearing masks or some staff or whatever it is, although it's being recommended or, you know, strongly recommended to wear, I think that is a challenge for some of our staff that would like to see students and staff in masks. And so I think some of that is, is difficult. I think at the secondary, and it's been something that we've talked about even going into last year, and we have large sizes of schools. And so I know that trying to go three to six feet and is hopefully six feet, but especially at the high school to try and at least get six feet when you're looking at social distancing also becomes difficult. So I know those are some difficulties as it relates to some of the mitigations that we have in place, but I'll also allow some other issues here.
Yeah, so the, the actual implementation of the plan, I mean, we were all out at sites the first couple of weeks, so we heard from principals primarily to start with regarding where they needed some clarification, what was working, what wasn't working. We do intend to get that COVID committee back-started again to take a look at, you know, what we can do differently if there's some modifications that need to be made. We've reached out to principals to sort of, not that those teams ever were deactivated, but reactivate those folks that were on those teams and start to gather some additional feedback on ways we can modify either as cases increase or as cases decrease. What are some things we can do to make sure that it's as easy as possible for, and safe as possible for our teachers to teach and our students to learn?
Would it be possible to get that back together quickly? It seems like it might be one of those sooner rather than later kind of things.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. And we've, we've reached out to the site administrators to identify who those folks are and we're currently planning to get them together and talk through, you know, the same kind of process that we did last spring.
Yeah, we are, we are working on that. My office has been collecting names because we also know that we have staff that were on committees that may not want to be on the committee anymore, or they've had staff that have left and we're putting staff back on. So we're working on that exponentially so that we can meet.
I did have a question about buses. So I know some districts are interpreting buses to be public transportation and I was wondering what the group has, what conversations have happened regarding that.
Madam, Ms. Brunner, this is a conversation that we've had a number of times, but according to House Bill 2898, which is still being considered or the state law, that supersedes what we know as a CDC order or recommendations. that supersedes what we know as a CDC order or recommendations that are made by Maricopa. So right now, there's a lot of controversy relating to that, but we still feel like there is a state statute that potentially is in place. We also have a couple of other issues that we have considered. One is if you have a child who shows up at a bus stop who does not put a mask on, we would never deny that child to get on a bus. So there are some problems with accountability worth, for masks, for students who we cannot pick up, and how do we hold those kids accountable if that were to be put into place? Also, you have a bus driver has to turn around and discipline kids if the mask is not on or not above their nose, things like that. We want them focused on safety of the road. The other issue that we have is we're not necessarily transporting public, the public. We are only transporting our students and our boundaries to our schools, their, their cohort. So it's a little different than an airport or a, a train station or subway anyways. So those are all the considerations that we've made, and we're trying to follow the same thing that we're doing at our schools right now. A lot of interpretation on that law right now, and unfortunately, we don't have the answers to, to specifically which state statute still, if it's surpassed, if it stands above the CDC order. We believe it does right now, and the Maricopa County recommendations. So right now, we're following the state statute.
And I was wondering if you could clarify when the Health Department gets involved with closing schools? That apparently has been happening in some other districts.
Yeah, so with, with outbreaks and that county communication, I actually speak to the representative I work with every day. Every day, we go through our cases. We look at the numbers at the schools. Now, what they've instructed to me is they don't necessarily close a school. We, we look at, you know, all the factors, how, how many kids, how many staff, how many cases we're looking at. If we feel that there, you know, may be an issue as far as too many cases and, and spread, as far as outbreaks, then we work with them and the state as far as resources on. So it's not a, you know, they just come in and close a school. They, they really told, told me that they look at, you know, all of the factors and really try to help us because their goal is to keep schools, you know, in person as well.
So what, what would those fact, can you just give me a couple, what the main ones would be?
Sure, so we, we do look at those outbreaks that I talked about, the epilink cases. And so, you know, as, as we saw in some of our larger schools, you can have a lot of cases, but they're not necessarily epilinked, meaning, you know, spreading in the school. So, you know, we would look at those factors. I'm sure that if cases got to a point that, you know, they, they kind of go up and down naturally, and so if we didn't see that, you know, we would want to contact them. Some of the resources that they've, you know, talked about is, you know, maybe testing and, and stuff like that. So, you know, it really, there are so many factors involved, and each school is different. So they haven't told us that they will just come in and close a school, that they'll, you know, work with us to, you know, hopefully prevent that.
And has the district had any discussion with the State Health Department? Some folks have been contacting us, asking about our choice to not participate with the state testing, and I was just curious what that looks like, what discussions have, have been had and how that decision was made?
Right, with the pool testing. I'll let Dr. Gilbert take that, pool testing.
Is it the pool testing they're referring to?
I think so. So that, you know, that they're, they offer the free testing with the consent of the parent, obviously.
That would be the pool testing. We've had a number of conversations as it relates to pool testing. The difficulty with pool testing is you have to have a significant population that is in agreement as you're going because in order to test, it has to be approved by the parent. So if you have a class of 25, and let's just say 12 in that class aren't going to choose to test, when you do pool testing, the first thing they would do is come in if there seems to be a, a possible case, they would test everyone in the, in the classroom minus those that would be opting out. So now you already only have half of that population. If one person tests positive within that class, then that whole class, it would be minus the grouping since they would opt out, would all be sent home for a day because it's usually a day turnaround to determine. If there is a positive case in there, then it goes for more testing of that group individually in order to determine positive cases. So to not have a collective group in agreement to try and pool test and, and to address those would be very difficult to manage from that perspective, which is why we're trying to make sure and sharing like in the last slide that Ms. Hartley put up of the free testing that is, that is out there, looking into what can the district get as it relates to testing materials, what resource we can give the parents. There are a number of companies, I guess you can imagine at this time, that are saying that they have a lot of testing that they can give you for free, but it's really not, I'm sorry. With what we found in some, it's really not free because it's really they're charging the insurance of the, the families instead of it actually being free. And so that would then, we would make sure that we would go through our normal process of procurement of somebody that's coming in in order to, that there's a cost to our families. And so there's some difficulties in, in all of that. What's really fortunate, I think, at this time, and, and as Ms. Hartley has shared on the, on the slide, is there's still a lot of places within our community that you can go and get free testing.
So for the original question, then it was assumed that there wouldn't be a large enough percentage. Was there any, any, at certain sites, maybe, you know, questions asked of folks, you know, of parents and guardians?
I would, I would say no, there hasn't been question asked of folks. I guess I would agree that it was an assumption being that we don't have a solid population on one side or the other that would be willing to wear masks or not wear masks, deciding to quarantine or not quarantine. I don't know that we would have a solid collective group of agreement that would make it so that it would be efficient for a school to do the pool testing on a regular basis, as well as the number of kids that would be out, depending on how that process went.
Okay.
Mrs. Brunner, can I see if any other board members have some questions?
And I was done.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Love, can you still hear us?
I can. I do have some questions. I think this is maybe for Ms. Hartley. I've gotten some questions. I don't know how to answer them, so I figured I would ask them to you tonight. But there seems to be this opinion that we're misrepresenting the percent positivity on our dashboard because we're calculating that by the student body. Can you tell me why we're doing that as opposed to calculating it or dividing it by like total number of people tested?
Well, we, to answer your question, we would not have the total number of people tested. We don't, we don't get that information. This information that is provided on our dashboard is what we receive for positive cases, meaning a parent will report a case to us or the county who, you know, if, if we don't hear from a parent, the county lets us know that there was a positive case in our schools. But we don't, we don't ever have any numbers about, except, you know, for the schools, of who's tested negative. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, that was the, I was trying to read the question exactly as it was asked to me, and I believe that's kind of, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
Yeah, we don't, we, we wouldn't, we don't collect that information unless it's, you know, you know, when it comes to quarantine, if we have to collect a negative test to, you know, get out of quarantine, or if, if somebody collects a test because they're testing out of an isolation period because their symptoms went away. So we wouldn't have an accurate number of negative tests because they're not reported to us.
Okay. Is there any way of, I guess, working with the Health Department, like County Health Department, to get that data of like total number of tests, or is that pretty like locked down?
You know, I, I think that we could probably get that, but what I will tell you now, there's home testing and, and that information, you know, is not reported to anybody. So it would still, that data still wouldn't be completely accurate because the county wouldn't even have all those negative tests.
Thank you so much. In the interest of time, I am done because I want to make sure I'm giving the time to the rest of the board members.
Thank you, Ms. Love. Mr. Olive?
I had one. Ms. Brunner took care of it.
Okay. Mr. Worth?
I have one question. So Leo, you mentioned that when students are being quarantined, that if they have a vaccine, the, the time can be shortened, but you use the word "may." So why, I don't quite understand.
So, so in our, in our, can you hear me? I'm sorry. In our plan, yeah, the, I'm sorry. The voluntary proof of vaccine, if someone was to voluntarily, voluntarily provide that, if someone was to voluntarily provide that they have a full vaccine, we would shorten that duration. And that could be that they would return, okay, upon showing proof of that full vaccine. Does that make sense? I, I think my word "may" may have, may have indicated that it could be longer. Is that what you, does that clarify it?
I can speak to that as well. So he's correct. I mean, if we do get that vaccine proof from a parent that they provide, it will, it will eliminate that quarantine for that student. But also, you know, when we get notified of cases, we're not always notified in a timely fashion. So, you know, sometimes we're notified before the quarantine period's up or there's a shorter number of days. So we don't put in an exact number of days because it can change.
And I do have a couple of questions. Lindsay, why don't you stay there? How, what are we seeing, you know, we have, we have a lot of cases in the schools, but how is this comparing to the community spread within our community? I know that there are many, many people who just don't sit at home. School is only a part of their day. And how, how do we reconcile the fact that people are out and about and moving around and not, not isolated and obviously are bringing a COVID into our schools from not only outside activities and potentially, you know, we do have with the outbreaks, we're showing epilinks in the schools. So can you maybe give us some insight or comments concerning that?
Sure. So I would say obviously with communities, high community spread, we are going to see more cases in the schools. That was, we saw it last year. We're seeing it again now. You know, unfortunately, we don't have anything really to compare it to last year because we, you know, we weren't in school. But, you know, when you see higher community spread, you're going to see more cases in school. But, you know, we're still seeing very few cases linked on school, you know, with the best of our ability to, to look at that, you know. And, and the one thing that I will keep reiterating, and I know Mr. Rother said it, is, you know, we stick with those exclusion guidelines. It doesn't matter if you're vaccinated, it, you know, if you're sick, you need to stay home. And, and we really do enforce those exclusion guidelines to make sure that we're keeping, you know, positive cases out of the school the best we can. And I know sometimes that's frustrating because a lot of the COVID symptoms are, are other things. But, you know, we really have to, you know, follow that guideline so we can keep the cases out of the schools.
I know that last year, AIA kind of flip-flopped back and forth between spectators and, and athletes and things like that. And what are the current, I guess, views of AIA for our athletics within the schools?
Yeah, Ms. Mazdin, the, the AIA has a pretty lengthy, excuse me, a pretty lengthy document with recommendations for schools. Regarding spectators, they haven't really got into that too much. That's really a site, site-based decision on that. With our student athletes, we have implemented some of the same mitigation that we had in place last year. For instance, our C2 form is for any student that is, that tests positive. They're still cleared by a physician or physician assistant, but they still have to be cleared to come back and play. So we're protecting our students that way. We also have in place mitigation regarding water and sharing water. Our, our student athletes have to have their own water bottle and they can fill it up. So we're following some of those same mitigation strategies that we had last year. I can provide you and the board with that document. It's, it's pretty lengthy regarding what the AIA is recommending, but we do have in place some of the same mitigation strategies that we did last year.
Okay, thank you. The other question, maybe, Mr. Rother, that you might be able to do. I noticed that there are some, some school districts that are providing the opportunity for those who are interested for Saturday vaccination sites. Are we considering doing that at any of our schools for those who are interested in receiving the vaccine for their students over the age of 12?
Sure. Great question. And certainly, when we were a little bit earlier in the summer, we had looked at that quite a bit, and we had talked with Tempe Union, Phoenix Union. Phoenix Union has some pretty good turnout for, for their vaccination events, and we had a great turnout for our vaccination event for, for teachers. When it comes to students, even in Tempe Union, when they implemented that, they didn't have a great turnout with students coming in to be vaccinated or families coming in to have their students vaccinated. So we made the decision based on how many vaccinations were available in our, in our district boundaries and how really readily accessible it is to go to any, you know, most CVS, Walgreens or any other sort of pharmacy and get those vaccinations, that we wouldn't offer that as a district because we just didn't feel like we would have the, the response to justify having one of those events. It's still something that we could look at, but again, in, in our community, there's, there seems to be plenty of vaccination sites available where students can receive free vaccinations over the age of 12.
Okay, thank you. I think that's all I have, other than I would truly urge anyone who, who is at our school sites, who happens to see maybe there's some breaks in the mitigation strategy or somebody, you know, moves desks and doesn't move them back or something, please contact the teacher, contact the school itself. These things can be corrected at the sites more quickly and by talking to those people that are right there on the front lines, either the teacher or the principal or someone else at that site. And try and resolve those issues at the site because oftentimes it takes several days for things to come up and move back and move out, and we can get it taken care of immediately. We really need everyone's help with that. And we also strongly urge that everyone, that we, we do in order to control COVID-19 in our schools to, please mask up. Ask, you know, it's really one of the most important strategies that we, that's available to us. I know, to, to help control this. I know that everybody's tired of it. Everybody wants not to wear a mask. But it does help control the spread, and it also is a caring gesture to your neighbors. So thank you very much for your, your presentation, and in a couple moments, we will, oh, Mr. Narducci.
Members of the board, I, I just want to thank our team. I don't know if you know, it's not just a presentation, but they meet multiple times, I would say even more than multiple times per day, looking at data as it comes in, looking at it live in the morning, looking at it in the afternoon, working with sites to work on mitigation changes as they occur and not waiting. We will increase some campus visits to help principals to, to make sure and ensure that mitigation strategies are, are being enforced. We do get some reports that sometimes are over-exaggerated as to what's happening at the site and sometimes not, there actually are, and so we need to assist our sites with that. Also, our dashboard, going to a daily, we applied more resources to it based on the communication from our community input as well as, as well as the input from our mitigation and our teachers. So that, and that's not an easy task. And so sometimes it, it just takes a lot to keep that dashboard going, and I'm hoping our public understands that it's what we know cases are and it's as accurate as we, we can have it at that moment of time. Also, the mitigation team that's going to be reconvened here. Those meetings will be a little different. We've been asked to have those as, like round robin sessions where, where we can hear those concerns and be able to react to those in real time. So those will be activated here. And then also, I wanted to strongly encourage as well, we'll see additional signage go up at schools that we're strongly recommending, just like the CDC guidance, as well as they recommend as well, the, the mask-wearing in our schools to, to help, to help with that until we, until we. we, until we further find out what is, what is happening with the statute. So we are going to take the stance of strongly recommending, and I want our community to know that that is a stance that we do strongly recommend our, our children as they see cases in their schools and as they look at this dashboard, that they, that they take that seriously and, and try to assist with that, with any of the mitigation strategies that we can employ.
Thank you, Mr. Narducci. I will go ahead and end our study session, and we will take about a five-minute break before we start the meeting. And I do apologize that it will start a little bit after seven.